Okay, folks, we will call this meeting at the Bridgerton City Council order for April 5th. You would all please rise and join us in the pleasure of being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we're proud to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Mr. Perkins will now call the roll.
Councilmember DePauw?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Heinz?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Morris?
Here.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
We have all council members present tonight. Good to see everybody. Thank you all very much. Right down to item D, the agenda approval.
Second?
Motion made by councilmember Heinz, seconded by councilmember Luke for approval of tonight's agenda. Further comments, questions, suggested changes? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The standing motion carries. We are now to the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. I will advise everybody, we do have a public hearing tonight on another issue, so if you're here for the public hearings, this isn't the time that you talk. This is just on public comments with regards to the city on other issues. So, first up, Mike Pinson. Mr. Pinson?
My name is Mr. Pinson, and I'm from the District of Central Rose, which is in Bridge Drive. In my campaign, I, a couple things were my attention. One was the fact of Taylor Avenue and the Great Street, people are going up and down there, and I come to the election and see what goes on at the school. And I'm hoping that the city would put a stop sign at Oldbury for those first people that bringing their children to the hall and actually next street to do that in a safe way. The other thing I was concerned about is that I probably could turn up some questions about how the school manages all those small children. And dangerous situation adding an election to that interference. And they only get better at that for the next two years. We're not going to get any election at that school because of construction, whereas it'd be two years we won't be here. Anyway, I was kind of hoping that you could step up and do something with this stop sign hopefully. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Comments are noted. Thank you, Mr. Pinson. Next up is Nancy Lepia.
Do you have my contact information?
We do.
On the card there.
Thank you.
First, just for reasons wanted to congratulate everybody that won their elections, but that's why I'm here. I'm here because I'm kind of always trying to sit in the back of my head for some time and I'm finally going to bring it out. Last fall, I was invited to attend a major municipality council meeting. Upon entry, her cell phone, everything had to go into a bag, a bucket through the scanner, and then I had to go through the scanner. I thought I was getting ready to fly somewhere. It was quite impressive. And then Monday, my husband and I went up to take over the county election board to vote. Again, we were matched with the same thing. He didn't think about it, had it pocketized in his pocket, which he also said, I'll have to keep this until you leave the premises, and that was no problem. I'm concerned that we have metal detectors, but they don't seem to be operating. I guess I feel from a security standpoint, that might be an additional cost to the city, but it can outweigh the cost of somebody getting hurt. This building belongs to the residents of Bridgerton. That includes you, the elected officials. We invite people to come in, such as some that are here this evening for a public hearing, our employees. And I just don't feel that citing with caution is the mistake. Nobody wants to have a situation on their hand where somebody gets hurt or worse. I'm just, I don't know all the ins and outs. If it's a budget issue, manpower issue, or what the issue is, but I do think it's timely. We start seriously taking consideration and doing something about that. Unfortunately, more often times, we hear about some type of mass thing that happens somewhere somehow. And I don't think that's how it should want to be in the news. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your comments are noted.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Patricia Blam.
Good evening, Council. Patricia Blam, 2301 Bridge Drive. I am here today for some vacation purposes, and I'm looking forward to becoming councilmember. I wanted to address the commission for the charter review. I was a member of that commission and worked for ten months, twice a month, for our run and put together a proposal for the council. When I went to the voters, I feel like there was some work that still needed to be done and communicated to the public that needed to be done. For the next go around, and I say for the next go around because I really urge you in hopes that you continue the effort to work on the charter and to put forth some changes to the charter. As far as this, this is a great city. Looked here since 2007. I was not even a native council member before. And I love this city, and I want it to continue to be great. And I think some changes to the charter would be great. I do want to address one thing. You all unanimously approved that for Bill that went forward to be proposed under proposition. And later on, when you took this one vote, some of those, later on, provisions changed. And so, I just hope that the public can learn more about what those charter provisions were for and can try to understand it a little bit better for the next time. Thank you. So, I thank you. I don't do this type of thing. So, I appreciate your time.
Sure, she did fine. Thank you all for your service on the commission. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Jessica Perkins. Jessica Perkins.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Perkins. I live on Herman Avenue, and I first was chair of the charter division division commission. But the council members regularly attended our prior company meetings from late October to June and witnessed their deliberations, added their viewpoints, and challenged their thinking. Again, thank you. Thank you for understanding the process and respecting our communication. The C R R C did not offer recommendations based on a personal perspective to our clients. We researched standard practices. We heard from loads of the most impactful recommendations by the residents existing and current council members and municipal judges. Additionally, our deliberations were guided by well-respected municipal attorneys. Regarding the proposition results, I was just hearted. For all four propositions, one vote of approval was met with two votes of disapproval. I believe that disapproval was due to three reasons, but the most critical reason was misinformation from candidates issued to the competition as a campaign platform. Last night, less than 1,300 of our registered voters said no to a form of government that is practiced by most professional management municipalities in the secondary district. They said no to ensuring administrative continuity and institutional memory when a new mayor is elected. They said no to the more professional title, sick administrators instead of administrative assistants. They said no to attracting the brightest and best public administration candidates to our city because of the many all change, that individual employment is ineffective. They said no to attracting the most experienced municipal judge pool of candidates when Judge LaBrew retired in the next four years. And finally, they said no to extending the council members' terms three years to accommodate the steep learning curve for newly elected council members. Personally, I don't think you want Bridgerton to be behind the times. The last night's vote led us to the 20th century. We are clearly in the 21st century. As I stated, I think this is a case of misinformation. To me, it was selfish of the candidates who ran on their campaign and demonstrated irresponsibility. I'm a numbers person. And if I could ask the Board of Elections for a printout of the proposition results by mayoral candidates, I think I would ask for hanging the source of this misinformation. However, I really don't need to do that because I do know that one council member attended, who rarely attended our C R R C when you stated, his opposition at the senior luncheon as well as an emailer. In both cases, he didn't mention his rationale. Luckily, the C R R C provided rationale to you. As we look forward, I implore all current and future council members to discuss the proposed changes with their residents and awards, so they will not exceed by candidates in the future. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to moving Bridgerton to the 21st century.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. We again appreciate your service on the C R R C as well, especially for cheering. I have no further other cards. Does anybody have anything else? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes of the March 15, 2023 meeting minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes?
Motion. Motion made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Heinz for approval of the March 15, 2023 meeting minutes. Further comments, questions, suggested changes? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The standing, that motion carries. We are down to appointments and presentations. Item G tonight, I will call on Police Chief Masadi because we have a new officer presented to the community tonight.
Good evening. Once again, thanks for allowing me to come up and introduce our business network, our family. With me tonight is Joshua Power. So Joshua was a graduate of the Law Enforcement Training Institute of Columbia, Missouri. He graduated at Academy in 2022, and he's certified police officer. He comes to us, he did a short sample with the city of Freeport. And he had actually been pursuing Joshua before that time, when he was in the academy. And we're extremely excited to have him. He's qualified and certified on obviously firearm taser, use of force, the gun as OC spray, so he's got certifications in those things. Also, one of the things with Joshua that he and I have a comment that he's a product of the Police Explorer Post program. He came to the program in the city of O'Fallon, and he did receive seven awards from the National Explorer Competition when he was doing that. So I know that this city's had a role with the Explorer Post, and we've run a post here for a number of years. And those kids that come through that program usually become police officers and move through the ranks. And I know myself, being a product of that, I can't be tied up with all that program. And I'm very proud to have them on our staff, and I welcome them to our family. So without further ado, this is Josh Power.
I didn't want to leave without recognizing the honor of Police Commissioner that appeared with us tonight. We have Commissioner Jim Martz, we have Nancy Lepia, and Sarah Hornberg that's here tonight. Just the president who appreciates that, and even a lot that's for showing up in this introduction and introducing the sort of thing. So, thank you for doing that. Also, one last note, this field training officer, Andrew Stanford, in the back here, who was very nice to come to take this time out tonight to support the gentleman that he's training and that's driving Harber for several weeks. So, thank you for allowing me to introduce him to the council.
Thank you, Chief. Josh, do you have anything? Does it go by Josh or Joshua?
Either one's happy to be here. I appreciate what happens.
We're happy to have him. It's probably a long career. We have one proclamation tonight. It's on Arbor Day. Mr. Candy, you want to read it, or you want me to? You want me to? Okay. So, we have here in the city of Bridgerton, whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday is called Arbor Day, it first observed the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed to the nation and world, and whereas trees can be a solution combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by cleaning the water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other good products. Whereas trees in our city increase the property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our communities. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Terry Briggs, mayor of the city of Bridgerton, do hereby plan for plant Friday, April 7, 2023, is Arbor Day in the city of Bridgerton. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and our woods. Further, I urge all citizens to plant a tree to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I would ask someone to make motion then for adoption of the proclamation?
Remove.
Motion made by councilmember Patel.
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Zimmer for the comments of discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Standing? Those you carry. We're a little early. A lot of times in other communities, Arbor Day is the end of April. We're doing ours a little earlier. We will then with this proclamation also be recognized as a tree city, if that's the correct terminology?
Yeah, tree city USA.
Tree city USA in the United States. So, we're very happy to be doing this. Councilmember Patel?
Yes, does that mean it's always going to be on April 7? Remember on April 6, your birthday.
Thank you. All right, we've already voted, so that passed. We are down to recessing for a public hearing. So we will recess for the public hearing, 23 PZ03. This is on a community business district. Mr. Greitens, would you like to get us started, please? You don't have to be sworn in on this one, so.
Thank you. This is application 23 PZ03. This is a request for the zoning tax amendment. The request is to amend the V2 community district regulation to allow non-perforation of motorized off-road vehicles, sales establishment, and adding as specialty were permitted with the special use permit. This was the planning commission, and as their March 13, 23 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval by the votes of seven to one. The applicant has stated that if this were to be approved, they would pursue a specialty use permit for the property at 3417, North London Boulevard. We're not here to talk about that properly tonight because this applies to the entire V2 district, but that's the property they are interested in pursuing for a specialty use permit on London Boulevard. So I wanted to include this map. You've probably seen it before. We have a tax amendment application to the V2 district. So this map shows all the property in Bridgerton as known V2. And as you see, it's a lot of it is a major district of London Boulevard, and then near Paintwell Rock Road, CP, and then Figueroa, and then the bulk of it is along Paintwell Rock Road to the northern west of I-70 and south of Interstate 270. So that's all the properties known V2 in the city of Bridgerton. Just to see Thomas on the V2 district, it includes two main areas, as I showed on the map, approximately 200 parcels. The V2 district is larger in area than has more parcels than the V3 or V4 district. The V2 district permits by right, and this is just a summary, retail, office, restaurant, financial institution has uses. Some of the retail uses get very specific. Specialty uses in the V2 districts include auto repair, gas station, medical clinic, and the industry. A little bit of background on this application. So, I had met with the applicant. They proposed their business plans to staff, and on review of their plans, staff determined that they did not match any of the existing, maybe categories listed in the V2 district, either as permitted by right or specialty use. So, on review of staff, in order to properly fit it into the V2 district, staff recommended that they apply for a tax amendment for the proposed business, but you had it as a specialty. That way, if it's a tax amendment were to be approved, they presented by a specialty use permit, which would then give the planning commission to the council an opportunity to review their specific proposal at this location. That being said, keeping in mind, the request for tax amendment applies to the entire V2 district. The, a few more comments on the V2 district, the purpose, the permitted uses, and this is best by its own margin. Permit uses would provide good services for something by the non-commercial public. The conference of plans typically depict areas that are known V2 as commercial in the future land use map, which allows principally for a mix of retail type of businesses, service, and other types of commercial use. A little bit on their proposal. They do currently operate this type of business in South County. So this would be, and they're figuring out to explain in detail, this is the second location presented if they were to request a use permit. But generally, the specialty use is retail sales is the predominant function, but they do also offer service and repair to their, the vehicles they sell. But when staff reviews this review, we think it's similar to other permitted uses, but because of some of the effective services they offer, we think it's proper location in the code for this type of use would be for the specialty permit. That way, it would allow the city for the review to address the service and repair issue. There were some specific provisions that staff recommended in the language that was included in the report, including no sale passenger vehicle. I think it's important that be distinguished from a lower vehicle sales business, they do not sell passenger vehicles. I think that's critical that it's just be ordered that way. Any outdoor display of merchandise already required, specialty used permits in the V2 district, so that's why that wasn't added as a special provision. I do have a specific language here, the detail language. This is what, based on the discussion with the applicant, what staff recommended, if this were to be approved, to be added to the special use of the V2 district. Are there any questions?
... for brand-new homes. We currently have a very nice business, Daniel Smith, and they're fine most of the time. Every once in a while, nice weather, they got the garages open, they got their working on vehicles with no mufflers, and they get pretty loud. And I know how off-road vehicles can make a lot of noise, and you're saying they're going to do services, going to be inside their buildings, are they going to be test drive them out in the parking lot or behind the building, and making a lot of noise? Just kind of curious. And if so, what kind of ordinances do we have to pop the noise ordinance for this, too?
Thank you. I'll try to address those individually. One thing I want to point out, so this is a request, of course, for a tax amendment to determine whether or not it should be added to the special uses in the V2 district. Those types of concern, some of that did come up at the planning committee, but those would be exactly what could be addressed through a specialty permit. So if this were to be approved, when an applicant, whether this business owner, a future one, were to apply for a specialty use permit, you'd take a look at the specific location and what types of conditions could be built into that approval. So it was generally discussed at the planning committee with the understanding that those are specific conditions that would be applied to the specialty permit if that time were come. Because each request would have to be addressed on case by district.
I'm in favor of the development going there. So it's not, I just wonder what you're doing possibly on the outdoor noise that might be affected by this type of usage on this particular location.
And that's a good example of why it was staff recommendation to add it as a specialty use. And because of the nature of business, it probably doesn't fit as permitted by right. But add it as a specialty use, so that way staff, planning committee, and council all get a chance to review those types of concerns.
All right, thank you.
Good. Further comments, questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Greitens. Is the petition present tonight? Are you Mr. Sherrill? Just give us your name and address, sir.
My name is Richard Copart, and my address is 2308 Fairmark Station Road, and that's in Valley Park, 63208.
Very good. Proceed.
Awesome, awesome. It's so much to see you guys here, and congratulations to everyone who's due of the elections and, and the officers. Yeah, I'm looking at some of the pictures.
Okay. You have anything else you want to add, or just answer questions?
I don't consider any questions. I'm just really glad to be here, and we're really excited to be a part of this that you guys are looking forward to. Just wanted to say that.
Very good. Questions of the applicant. Councilmember Norris.
Yes. Is this going to be, is this a new store, a second store, a third store?
This will be our second location.
Okay. All right. And it indicated in your report, no outside testing. Is that correct? No outside, you're not going to do a race track or anything around there, are you, to test your vehicles?
No.
Okay. That's what you're saying in here, no test ride. So, because that is the residential area right behind you, so we don't want that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Patel.
That was part of my question, too, but you, and the thing says for outdoor display, are you planning on having some outdoor display? I mean, that's on a later issue, you know, instead of this?
That would be on the conditional use, yes.
Conditional use. Or would that be something they would only be asking, like on certain weekends or certain holidays, outdoor? Or would it be, we granted them the?
It would be up to what the conditions are we put on a special use.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm looking forward to your business being there. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Another one coming forward? Very good. You might need to lean in. Yeah, they're having a little hard time hearing you. Any further questions from down? Thank you for coming forward. Give us your name and address.
First off, congratulations. I had no idea there was some lunch. I mean, after all winter. So, you know, I've been in this property for a few years. It's been a long haul, but I've had a lot of different interests. I put forth, I told a lot of people enough. And these guys, they're standard guys. They're not, they don't have a dream. They've already disappeared. It's going to be recycled. They've already made us happy that they're seeing good business. I've applied their shop on several occasions to make sure that they're doing good business. I wanted my anger, which is the largest thing in the world, my bond, to be a good tenant, somebody who's going to be there in, and he's going to be there, not just a six-month deal. And I'm looking for somebody who's going to be there for years to come. I believe in these guys. I think they're going to do a great job. I do believe that there are a couple of obstacles that you still need to overcome and make sure that everybody happy Bridgerton, like test drive and deal with certain rules and regulations that we're going to impose on these guys. I don't want weaknesses for the neighborhood. I want a good tenant, a good distance that brings in sales packs for the city, which is, every tenant does bring a sales pack. He's got to do, every time he's got a motor, a dirt bike or four-klower, he's racing to get the pieces. So I think that in no small sense, I'm in full support, and I hope that you guys all get that in mind.
Very good.
If you have any questions?
We do. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. John Stott, I just want to say, first of all, thank you so much. I know you've been trying to fill this property for a while, and I want to see you succeed, because if you succeed, then we all succeed. In the planning and zoning meeting minutes, it says, you're quoted as saying, you knew they had some problems with the back parking lot. Can you explain what that is?
So, there are areas where the asphalt hasn't actually opened up, and I have just put in what's called a flat strip, or limestone, to let long areas, to where there would be a top hole. Because when we drive through the area, they're not red lights, and they know it's dying. And as well, cranks up front. Just recently, we repaired one of the flat out front, we're craning to, to. of the flat out front, we're cranking to, to do, design this cross, remember, but, to answer your question, my plan is, one, by fill the strip off, and then my plan is going to do asphalt repairs, which will be taking out the, the, cross limestone, and putting in actual asphalt.
Okay. So, one of the things in here is that this business could potentially use the back lot to do demonstrations of their vehicles, and if that parking lot isn't in good condition for motorcycles, it could be a hazard, so just something to be thought of. I won't be on council to vote on this, I'm actually kind of excited, I have one, I don't really have to put much thought into it, but I, I do hope it succeeds. Thank you.
And, and, and to answer your question, the parking lot is flat, I mean, A T B certified, they're used to updrum, so in this instance, what I'm going to provide, like, the day-to-day would still be a relief, not like you could take a car and drive all the way to parking lot, because there will be areas where there's a fine slot to put in place, and I just didn't do a lot of that, I mean, there was really no reason to, but with these guys in place, I, I find that I'd like to do those kind of repairs in that parking lot.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions? Thank you. Appreciate it, Derek.
Good, Steve.
Any further support, those in supporting, when we should come forward to buy in support of this? This is, again, it's just a tax amendment to planning and zoning. Anyone in opposition, in opposition to this? Seeing none. We will conclude this public hearing and move on to the other items on tonight's agenda. Alright, we are on the permits and waivers, item J, and we have a liquor license application. Councilmember Norris.
Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry. Move towards, somebody here, sorry. Uh, this is the first consideration of new liquor license. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, he was right. You needed to make a motion to approve.
Right.
Was made by Councilmember Norris, seconded by Councilmember Hood. Now you can proceed.
Alrighty, thank you. Move that new liquor license, Ramouche Bridgeton, I'm sorry, I pronounced that, Ramouche Bridgeton, 1234, 34 St. Charles Rock Road, liquor by the drink, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday sales by the drink, um, that's the first consideration, so move to table.
Motion made and seconded at table. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing, motion carries, the item is tabled. We will move on to perfection of bill, section L, bill number 6368, Councilmember Grimmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for second reading of bill number 6368.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Grimmer, seconded by Councilmember Patel for the second reading of bill 6368. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing, motion carries, Councilmember Grimmer.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 23, PG dash 01, amending special use permit number 16 dash 28 to incorporate the property at 12712 St. Charles Rock Road into use by the adjacent QuickTrip located at 12700 St. Charles Rock Road, to expand the facility by developing the property with diesel pumps and a canopy that would accommodate tractor trailers and large trucks. Move to, move bill number 6368 from the table for the purpose of a special use permit.
Second.
Move to table.
You moved the table, that's what you want to start.
Right, exactly. Move to table, bill 6368, for, for the purpose of, consideration special use permit.
Motion's made, tabled.
Correct.
On bill 6368.
Karen's right, Karen's right, I jumped the gun.
Okay.
We need to move, to make this bill ordinance number.
Number, what is the number?
I'm getting it, I apologize.
Alright. Hold on.
Move, move that bill number.
Yeah, hold on. Bill 6368 become ordinance.
Move that bill number 6368 become ordinance number?
Sorry. 23. No, I'm looking right now, it looks back two minutes.
Yeah, you have to go back two more.
23.
23, 12.
13.
There's anything.
Okay, very well. Hey, motion's made by Councilmember Grimmer, seconded by Councilmember Patel, that bill number 6368 become ordinance 23 dash 13.
Okay, so we're going to.
Now you move for your table.
Back up and repeat. Move to table, bill number 6368 for the purpose of consideration special use permit. Move that the proposed use set forth of bill number 6368, be determined to promote the health, safety morals, or general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgeton in accordance with, and in the accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking into consideration the effect of such building, our use on traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, and general welfare of the community and public utilities. May I have a second?
Second.
Alright, very well. Finding a fact and continuing, finding a fact and conclusion of law, I find that as a fact, the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of Bridgeton, with respect to traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, or public utilities. I concur in my voice, this aye.
Very good. Councilmember Patel?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Lou?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Heine?
Concur and vote aye.
Very good. All concurred with you, Councilmember Grimmer.
Move to suspend council rules and remove bill number 6368 from the table.
Second.
Councilmember Grimmer has moved to suspend council rules and remove bill 6368 from the table, seconded by Councilmember Patel. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Standing, motion carries, Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, so, what we're looking at here, basically, is a, is an extension of the QuickTrip operation. There is a substantial demand for diesel fuel, diesel engines, modern diesel engines are very efficient, very powerful, and accordingly, they're used in a lot of commercial vehicles. This extension would just serve that purpose, as, we got testimony previously on this, a lot of these trucks now are just parking in front of the QuickTrip, kind of, you know, tying up the front portion of the lot, so, I also happen to have an acquaintance, a professional truck driver, these guys, professionals, they mark their, their chips or whatever by millions of miles, this guy's at five and a half million miles, okay? He says that, as, as far as the large diesel across the road truck, or whatever, they would avoid places like this with the plague, that's not with, that they're on the road to make time, they're going to be looking for professional, regular truck stops, as opposed to, as we call this, a fueling station. That's not to say that we're never going to see a diesel, a large diesel rig in there, the design incorporates five bays or spots that those, those type of tractor trailers could park in there. The other, I guess, objection we heard at, at planning and zoning, and this, and this is legitimate, is that we really didn't want to see those things sitting there idling for hours on end. As my friend informed me, that, uh, your large mod, modern over-the-road trucks, they don't sit there idle, that's very, very inefficient, they have a little thing in there called a tri-pack, it's a small little diesel motor that's muffled, and that diesel drives, that little motor drives a generator, they run the electric refrigerator, and the heating, everything that driver needs back in that cab. Also, there are a lot of regulations that, that limit these drivers on how many hours they can drive and so forth, but they said that, you know, the driver needs to get out of a place, he could do it within five hours, even if, if he had surpassed his limits, there are provisions where these guys can move around, so, what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make here is that this is not going to be a Mecca for large tractor trailer trucks, I think that seems to be the concern. It's going to be more or less your commercial guys that are, that are going around and making city, county deliveries, maybe that guy that's running up to Kansas City and back, or something like that on a daily basis, but there is certainly a demand for this, and I think QuickTrip is addressing that demand now. The entrance, if we look at the planning there, is 48 foot wide, and it's too deep, I guess that would be the northern end of there, that would be the farthest point away from the intersection of the 7270, which sometimes can get a little congested, but I think that this is an attempt of, by QuickTrip, to further service, the customer base, and the demand is definitely there, so, those things being in favor, I think with proper signings that would go ahead and, and limit the amount of time that we had in these base, and I think that was one of the amendments proposed, I think this is a pretty solid proposal, and I would be in favor of it.
Very good. Councilmember Patel?
Yes, thank you. We did discuss changing the amount of hours from 12 to possibly 8, and it seemed like we had at least half of us that wanted to do that, so I like to make a motion to be changed on line number, uh, number 5, at line number 63 on the second page, to just say 8 hours, because it matched the federal.
The attorney's telling us it's too late to amend.
Well, so, let's, let's be clear here, we've, we've had the administrative portion in the process, where all of you voted that this satisfies the conditions, okay, you can't vote on the legislative portion of the process inconsistently with the way you voted on the administrative process. So, if, if, if you're going to now add additional conditions to this special use permit, you're going to have to table this again, you're going to have to go back into the administrative process, there's going to have to be a motion to reconsider.
And.
You all voted in favor, so any one of you can make that motion, and you're going to have to redo the administrative procedure that we went through.
But questions can either be done tonight, to continue the.
Yes, sure. I mean, you're, you're, my, my recommendation would be that you go ahead, and whatever your amendments are, you need to vote on those now, you're mending the bill, and then you're going to have to go back into the administrative proceeding, you're going to have to move to reconsider, and then go through the findings, the facts, and conclusions of law again.
Okay, well, this was our first time for the rest of us to speak on this.
Well, so, when that's supposed to happen, is when, after the motion, you know, after the motion to put the, the bill in the ordinance form, that's the opportunity to debate the bill. Once you table and go into the administrative process, you are voting on the bill that's thrown in.
Okay. Alright, then I make a motion that we table it to reconsider.
Table, you want to make a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider.
Well, I mean, the first thing you want to do is make the motion to amend the bill by adding additional conditions, if you're going to add, if you're going to seek to add an additional condition, we'll get those voted on, and whatever the conditions are, then we're going to need a motion to table, to go into the administrative hearing, then we're going to need a motion to reconsider. Assuming that passes, then Mr. Grimmer's going to need to go through the findings, the facts, and conclusions of law again.
Did you find out that they want to do it first?
No. Alright, so you all understand what, the way we're going to, it seems a little backwards to me.
Well.
I'm just telling you.
This is the way it's been since this council passed the special use permit procedure the way it's been, been this way in 23 years of life.
Alright, so, amendments, we'll take the amendment, is the way I heard the counselors told us that we would proceed, so if you want to make your amendment, that's what you want to take.
If you have to have a bill on the table in order to, to go into the administrative process, so if you're going to amend that bill, you need to do it now, before you go into the administrative process.
Alright, so before we go to reconsideration of the administrative process, you're saying you need to.
I make a motion to amend the bill.
Amendments.
Making amendments, doing it.
Yep.
Is that correct?
State your motion for the amendment.
I state my motion to amend, uh, line item 63, number 5, no longer parking over 12 hours, to stay 8 hours.
Okay. Is there a sec?
Second.
Motion, well, I think Councilmember Zimmer.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, motion was made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Zimmer, to reduce the number of hours from 12 to 8. We have several others here that would like to comment. Councilmember Norris?
Well, that was what I wanted, that is, that is the federal guideline, so I would like to decrease that to 8, and also, I'd like to do an amendment, there was something about making sure the security of, I guess.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, if you vote for another amendment, that's.
Central first, okay.
Yeah, we vote on this amendment first, alright?
Thank you.
Councilmember Heine, on this amendment, to reduce the hours from 12 to 8.
This is not on that.
Huh?
This is not on that.
Okay, no, then you got to hold.
I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on the amendment to reduce the number of hours from 12 to 8?
That's what we're talking about.
Okay, those in favor of that amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing, that motion carries, the chair will recognize Councilmember Norris for another amendment.
Yes, I would like to do that amendment, uh, regard to, we were discussing about the safety, about the cut through, we wanted to make sure where the driveway, that the trucks couldn't get through, and we wanted to make sure we have an overhead height restriction, um, I don't know what they call it, you know, it's where they can't, you know, where they can't get through.
Go ahead, well, she was commenting, you have to hold off with comments from the public.
Okay, thank you. Call it a clearance bar.
Good idea.
And what's your amendment?
To make sure that we have a clearance bar between the driveways between the diesel and the regular, so, uh, trucks connected through, uh, our, that, to keep it separated, that's what we're a little concerned. Second.
Okay, motion's made by Councilmember Norris, seconded by Councilmember Lou, that the applicant be required to put in a clearance bar between the existing station and what is being closed, is that a correct statement?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Councilmember Hood?
Do we have to designate the height of the clearance bar in the yard?
You might want to do that.
No.
Do you?
I would think that would be a good idea.
Yeah? Do you have a whole height that you would like to throw out there?
Well, I think 13.6 is the minimum requirement on the highway.
Yeah, 14? 13.6?
14 feet.
Oh, wait, that's going to make semi's go through there.
13.6, so it's a mean.
Okay.
No.
Is the form of the motion to amend the amendment that's proposed, to place the clearance bar at 13.6, 13 feet, 6 inches, is very second?
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Norris, that the clearance bar be at a height of 13 feet, 6 inches. Further comments or questions? We have a lot. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yeah, what, what's the height, what are we trying to block from going through there at 13.6? I mean, why are we setting it at 13.6? Is there a particular reason of vehicles that you don't want to go through?
To Councilmember Hood?
I believe that that is the standard height, the minimum requirement for overpasses on state highways.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want the original amendment sponsor to also address?
Do you want to address the, you can, because I'm not done, and that's the answer.
Anything else? Okay, Councilmember Zimmer still has the.
Going up to 13.5 or something, why are we doing that? That's their, their problem, not ours.
It was my understanding, the recommendation, that we should put a height on the clearance bar to match, I guess, a recommendation, 13.6, was the figure that I thought was the standard by D O P laws.
I think.
Going up to thirteen-five or something? Why are we doing that? That's their, their problem, not ours.
It was my understanding, the recommendation, that we should put a height on the clearance bar to match, I guess, a recommendation, thirteen-six, was the figure that I thought was the standard by D O T rules.
I think if you had that concern, you would vote against the proposed amendment by Councilmember Norris and Councilmember Luke.
Yeah, I just, I guess I just don't understand the logic of what we're doing here. So, okay, I'll, I'll just vote against it because I don't understand.
Okay. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor.
What are your amendments? Second, the height.
Yes. My original comment about adding the bar was to keep the bigger trucks from going through. So what I'm hearing is I agree, having that type of height, which is highway standards, is too high. And what we should have is more like a parking garage height.
Okay, same thing.
Okay. Further comments or questions? We have several. Councilmember Grimmer.
Well, and I, and I'm not trying to insult anybody, but I, I clearly think we have no idea what we're doing here. Okay? Uh, what about the small little box truck that fills up and the guy wants to maybe go over and get a sandwich or something and just take with him? Do we know how high those trucks are? We don't. So I, I think before we do something like this, we need to probably, if that's what we want to do, we, we probably need to do a little more research on this and figure out what we're doing. We want to keep the big trucks out of there, but do we want to keep the little small driver that wants to maybe go over and, and buy something at QuickTrip or something like that? So what height would that be? And I, I don't think, I'm not trying to, so we just don't do this every day. If we're going to do something like this, we probably need a little more expertise in, in to figure out what we're trying to do and how to do that effectively without looking like we don't know what we're doing.
If that is the case, Councilmember, then you should offer a motion for tabling of the entire bill.
I, I would, I would offer that motion and, and again, I'm not trying to demean anybody, we just don't know what we're doing here.
Form of a motion, then?
Uh, I move to that we, uh, strike that amendment.
No, not the amendment, to table-
To table the, uh, consideration of that.
Of bill six-three, six-eight. The entire bill.
Entire bill?
You can't just do it on the one because you have council people here who have expressed some concerns.
There's still light on that one.
Um, I'll wait for, for the testimony, okay.
Okay. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think Gretchen hit it on the nail for, you know, like garage height or something that's like nine or ten feet. Uh, some garages, you, you have the minimum clearance, you know, six and a half feet, they keep, like, going to Cardinal Gate, they're kind of short and can't even take an SUV on some of them, and you have to use a smaller car. Um, we either need to know the exact numbers or we should go back with the, uh, applicant said, uh, when that was put in signage on each side of the post, that we could always convert possibly later to a, a bar up there higher. And let's see if just signage, I like to get this moving forward so that actually you can start construction on this diesel thing and not have to table for another couple meetings. Uh, we can always come back at their recommendation. If they're just having problems with people coming through there back and forth, tearing up their areas, they're going, they're going to want to put a bar up there to their own height restrictions they want to actually put up, I think. But I think if we at least have it where there's signings on each side and no, no through semis through that area right there, I think that's going to solve the problem.
Councilmember Norris.
Well, in the first presentation, we were implied that these were going to be eighteen-wheelers. And that was what we were concerned about, that these were going to be large vehicles that could possibly, you know, utilize getting through and coming around and getting through. So that was what my issue was. Uh, now it's, uh, so the smaller trucks, there's parking, parking spaces, they can park there and walk over. But that was our most concern with the large vehicles, that, that was the presentation that we were going to have these eighteen-wheelers coming in and circling around and coming out. So that was what was my concern, to just make sure they stayed in their lane. And that was why I was bringing that issue up.
Okay. Councilmember Luke, and remember, we're still on the height of the amendment before us, the height only. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm also not in favor of tabling tonight. I would like to move forward with this and get this done. I drive a tall SUV, so I know that many of the parking garages are eighteen-six inches. I have no problem making a decision on the height of the clearance for this clearance bar. Um, as Councilmember Norris just said, we were presented the first time that, yes, indeed, it was the idea of keeping the bigger trucks out of the, the residential cars, if you will, the cars, the small trucks, uh, that just the regular people drive, not the, the businesses. Keeping the bigger trucks out of the QT parking lot as it is now. So I think we can move forward tonight. I would like to move forward tonight. I, I don't know at this point where we are in the process, what the way to propose a height of, say, eighteen-six inches or nine feet or something like that would be.
Didn't suggest it possibly that we suspend council rules to have the original applicant come forward? Would that be acceptable?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to have the applicant come forward.
Motion's made by Councilmembers Zimmer, seconded by Councilmember Patel to suspend council rules to allow the applicant to come forward. Any further comments or questions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just give us your name, please, once again, sorry.
This is one Jeep truck.
Okay. So you know the situation we got?
Do.
Go.
What I might suggest is instead of trying to put an actual height, you all are around that department, you're correct, thirteen point six, what a large tractor-trailer. We do have zero height, zero, so it shouldn't, but if we do want to put a clearance bar, I might suggest for this, that's for the purposes of restricting tractor-trailer traffic. And then we can make sure that we're not excluding SUVs or maybe some of the bigger vehicles that are utilizing the auto vehicles that we're going to have available over there. But we understand, and we're fine with putting clearance bars in, but I do think for this purpose and trying to move this forward, instead of putting a number just for the purpose of restricting tractor-trailer crossover traffic from lot to lot, that would be my suggestion.
There you go. We have a couple of comments. Wait a minute. Councilmember Grimmer? Uh, the applicant?
Again, just to reiterate what my professional truck driver said, they, we're all concerned and hung up with these eighteen-wheelers. They're not going to frequent this place.
You got to ask the applicant. That's what we're doing.
Would you concur with that?
I do, sir. We are the fault line. Um, push your coming now for the supposed therapy going to New York, LA, Tennessee. We're looking for the local, the local hauler. Yes, we will have tractor-trailers in there, but we think that by providing this lot, we can move those tractor-trailers that are already parking and utilizing their lot to stay over there. And again, we did restrict that drive significantly. Um, it really isn't wide and I don't think any of them, unless they're just cowboys, um, will try to pass through there. However, I'm already, I'm already, if I start our people to visit them tomorrow, I just didn't think till the, till the type of, I already arbitrarily give a number and then find out tomorrow if it's wrong, so.
Okay. Councilmember Zimmer. Let's see the applicant.
Do you feel, do you feel we're managing your company by telling you where to, to allow trucks to go through? I, I feel that it's just like they came up with the rails around some of the, uh, nightclubs around, uh, Bridgeton. We require some of them to have fences because we're afraid they're going to walk out in the street, but some of them don't have to have it. I think that's, that's the business's problem, not ours. Are we encroaching on your business, do you feel, by us telling you what trucks can go where?
I feel that as a board, you all are moving after your constituents. So your constituents may not be concerned, but yours might. And we are more than happy to work within, if this was a deal jiller, if this was something that was outside of our business ability, then I would speak up to that effect. But however, if that brings additional insurance to not only the, the people on the board, but your, uh, your constituents, we're happy to put in a clearance bar to make sure that there's no intrusion and to follow through what you're concerned about.
Councilmember Patel.
Yeah, I like your idea of a, just a signage of some type and, uh, if they later need to put a bar up there, then they can do that. I don't think you need a permit for that, you know, but if they already got concrete posts there, they can put a, put a, a top on that, or whatever size is appropriate to keep a certain sized vehicle. Maybe it's a motorhome, this is diesel, and sometimes those are tall and else, then you have an eleven footer and we had a ten-foot, uh, bar and else, then they have to go all the way around to stock up with ice and stuff like that for their, for their RV. Uh, I think we need to leave it up to the property owners.
There are no further, thank you very much. We have no further comments, questions. We are back to the original amendment to the amendment. And that was proposed by Councilmember Hood to rate, to have the clearance bar at a height of thirteen feet, six inches. Councilmember Hood.
Mayor, can I withdraw at thirteen-six?
Sure.
Four-two.
Is the second willing to accept his withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay, that's off the table now.
Then I would-
So we are back to the original motion, which is for a clearance bar to be installed.
And then, and then can I add what she had indicated for purposes of, purposes of restricting crossover?
Tractor-trailer.
Tractor-trailer? Traffic.
So your motion would be to install a clearance bar with the intent that it's, uh, there's a deterrent for tractor-trailers to try and cross through that particular area. Is that somewhat right?
Correct.
Send the term, send the term in the height.
You have his motion? Let's see if the attorney has one and then the clerk's got one as well, so.
So what I had taken from this was must be a clearance bar for the purpose of restricting traffic, tr- trailer, sorry. Must be a clearance bar for the purpose of restricting tractor-trailer traffic from the fuel stop lot to the passenger vehicle lot.
Is that acceptable to everybody?
No.
Wait a minute. Councilmember Norris, is that acceptable as an alternative amendment?
Yes, that sounds, that you, you, the TT's sounded really good. Thank you.
Is that seconded by the second? Councilmember Hood? All right.
For the purpose of restricting tractor-trailers, tra- traffic from the fuel stop lot.
Uh, to the passenger vehicle lot.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Luke was the second. Are you acceptable of that?
I am.
Very good. Further comments or questions? So that's the question before you is the amendment to install the clearance bar as set. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Those in favor of that amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on it.
Councilmember Patel.
I'll say nay.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Nay.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Nay.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
By your vote of five-three, you approve the amendment.
Okay.
All right, we're back to the original. As amended now. So now we need-
Motion to table the-
Tabling.
One more second. One, two.
Yeah. With two amendments. Councilmember Grimmer.
Did we do the eight hours? Eight hours from twelve?
That was already passed.
Already passed. All right.
Does you have another amendment?
I don't know if this is an amendment or a comma.
Well, if it's not an amendment, we'll hold on comments until we come back with the bill.
That has to do with lighting.
Well, you have to put it in the form of an amendment if you want.
Okay. Let, let me, can I start off by saying that I have a constituent, uh, concerned about the lighting and he wants to make sure that the lighting somehow points away in a shiny down from the trailer park. He says that the lighting will be shining directly into that trailer park, which is proposed now.
Do you want to make it as an amendment?
I propose an amendment that the lighting, uh, be installed such as to be directed down towards the, the parking lot and not directly affect the residential area across the street.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Heinz, seconded by Councilmember Patel, to redirect the lighting to ensure it shines down upon the designated area and nowhere else, roughly what you think, correct?
Right.
Not across the street. Further comment on the amendment? Councilmember Zimmer.
Yeah, did we bother looking at the zoning, uh, what they recommended? That they've already have that in there? Possibly.
It should have been, yes, sir.
So.
And I-
Okay. Can I, uh, suspend the rules for back to the seat?
With that not a consideration of P and D when it came through and everything?
Parking regulations in the zoning ordinance, and this is under a section that's titled "Construction Lighting Times in State." Any lighting used to illuminate an off-street parking area shall be so arranged as to reflect the light onto the parking surface and away from the adjoining property. That's what it states in the zoning ordinance.
Would appear, wait a second. Okay, Councilmember Zimmer, are you?
I'm done.
You're done? Councilmember Heinz?
You said construction light? No, no, I'm sorry. It's under a section that addresses the construction lighting times parking lot and then, but in this section, do I like it? It's four-ten, in case of use for the record. It's section four-ten point one-one-zero, off-street parking and loading in the zoning ordinance.
You're saying the ordinance already covers that, that it directs directly onto that?
Under E-E four subsection B, any lighting used to illuminate an off-street parking area shall be so arranged as to reflect the light onto the parking surface and away from the adjoining property.
Okay, I'll go with that. Thank you.
So do you want to withdraw your amendment?
I'll withdraw my amendment.
Is the second willing to withdraw?
I'm going to withdraw my motion just because I want a discussion on this, but that's exactly what we want here. I withdraw my motion.
Very good. Thank you. All right. We are back to a motion from Councilmember Grimmer for the table.
Move to suspend council rules and-
Now, we need to move to table first.
Move to, all right, we did table that, all right?
Well, no, we have to vote on the table, so make the motion to table.
Move to suspend council rules and, and table bill number-
No, just, just move to table.
Remove the table, bill number six-three, six-eight.
No, just move to table.
All right, motion is table, bill six-three, six-eight, seconded by Councilmember Patel. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In motion carries. We're back to Councilmember Grimmer to now go forward with your other.
All right.
Go back.
Bill number six, no, you, I, this, this is a, I think what you want is a motion to reconsider the findings, the fact, and conclusions of law and the administrative-
Right.
Very well. All right.
So is that your motion to reconsider?
Yes, I want for reconsideration of bill number six-three, six-eight.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Grimmer, seconded by Councilmember Patel for the reconsideration of bill six three six eight. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
So, now, so.
Move to table, bill number six three six eight for the consideration of a special use permit.
That's already been done, so now you can go.
Now, you can go directly to.
Okay, all right. Move that the proposed use of force and bill number six three six eight as amendment be determined to promote the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgeton and towards within, in the accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking consideration the effect of such building or use on traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, and public utilities. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, very well, moving on. Findings of fact and conclusion of law. I find it the fact the proposed use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of Bridgeton with respect to traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, or public utilities. Uh, I concur in my vote is aye.
Very good. Councilmember Patel?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
With the amendments, I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
I concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Heinz?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Concur and vote aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Concur and vote aye.
All right, all have concurred. We are back to councilmember Grimmer. Now, you can go.
All right, very well. Uh, move for second reading of bill number.
No, 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 we're down to, I'm going to make bill six three six eight become ordinance twenty-three dash.
Move to bill, move that bill number six three six eight become ordinance number two three dash thirteen.
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 Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for bill sixty-three six eight as amended to become ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen. Further comments or questions? Hopefully not, so we can get on with this. Thank you. The clerk will call and roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you approve bill six three six eight to become ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen. We are to bill six three six nine, councilmember Grimmer.
All right, very well, move for second reading of bill number six three six nine?
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for bill six three six nine to become ordinance twenty, oh, I'm sorry, for the second reading. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
Thank you, mayor. An ordinance of the city of, of city council, the city of Bridgeton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with M and H Concrete Contractors, Inc., for the concrete savings replacement associated with select street in the Bridgeway subdivision in an amount of eight hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and an additional work in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. The project's budget includes a contingency in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Move that, uh, bill six three six nine become ordinance number two three dash.
One four.
One four.
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for bill six three six nine to become ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen. Further comments, questions from council? Councilmember Patel?
Yes, I know at the last meeting that was brought up about a different company and, uh, the other, second one in line, Rainey, or, um, this number's only like, uh, four thousand dollars apart, is a, the other one a Bridgeton business? I mean, I'm just kind of asking, and I don't, it doesn't say where these businesses are from, and so I'm just curious, is that something we ought to consider? So, just.
Mary's not a Bridgeton business.
Just, just asking, didn't know either one, so I'm happy with what's there. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Taking on the clerk, call and roll.
Councilmember Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you approve bill six three six nine to become ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen. We are down to bill six three seven oh, councilmember Luke.
Thank you, mayor. Move for second reading of, um, bill number six three seventy.
Sure.
Motion's made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Heinz for the second reading of bill six three seven oh. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement in the form substantially attached here to with Horner and Schifrin, Inc., in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for professional design services associated with stormwater projects at one one six seven six Mark Lane Lane and four one four four Bridgeton Meadows Court. Move that bill six three seventy become ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Heinz for the bill six three seven oh to become ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, mayor. This is a small amount of the budget, the two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar stormwater budget we put away for this year to be able to get some engineering work done on one project in particular that has been an issue for about twenty years, and I think it's time to, uh, get it taken care of and get it off the books.
Further comments or questions? Taking on the clerk will call and roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz?
Aye.
By your vote of eight to nothing, you approve bill six three seven oh to become ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen. Consideration of new bills, bill six three seven one, councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, so thank you, mayor. Move for first reading of bill number six three seven one?
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for the first reading of bill six three seven one. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty-three, P D dash zero three, amending the Bridgeton Code of Ordinance Section four ten dash one thirty, ten dash two to add motorized off-road vehicle sales establishment, including, but not limited to, the sale of four-wheelers, side-by-side ATV, dirt bikes, go-karts, and other similar motorized vehicles often referred to as quote "power sports" unquote vehicles intended for off-road use with provisions as permitted, land use with special use permit in the B two community business district. Move to table, bill six three seven one?
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for the table, bill sixty-three seventy-one. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Bill six three seven two, councilmember Grimmer.
All right, move for our first reading of bill number six three seven two?
Aye.
Motion's made by councilmember Grimmer, seconded by councilmember Patel for the first reading of bill six three seventy-two. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Grimmer.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty-three P D dash zero two, granting a minor commercial subdivision known as quote Hilltop Plaza Re subdivision unquote, to survive, to subdivide approximately seventeen point four seven acres, E two three lock zone, E two community district located at one one ninety-two and one one nine eight six Hall Mayor Avenue of Final Plant. Move to table, bill six three seven two?
Second.
Six three seven three. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Luke?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with United Golf LLC for installation of a new irrigation system at Berryhill Golf Course in an amount of six hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred dollars and no change. Move to suspend council rules for second reading.
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Heinz. To suspend council rules for the second reading of bill six three seven three. Comments, questions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Rules were suspended, councilmember Luke.
Thank you, mayor. Move for second reading of bill sixty-three seventy-three?
Second.
Motion's made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Heinz for the second reading of bill six three seven three. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining, motion carries. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here to with United Golf LLC for installation of a new irrigation system at Berryhill Golf Course in an amount of six hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, move that bill sixty-three seventy-three become ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen.
Second.
Second.
You beat you. Motion made by councilmember Luke, seconded by councilmember Patel. That bill six three seven three become ordinance twenty-three dash sixteen. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, mayor. Um, so, we've all been working towards this. I, I don't know that there's any surprises to anyone. Um, the contract is, is with United Golf. They were the low bidder, if you'll recall. Uh, there were a couple of minor changes in the contract from the original receipt, um, partially to allow the architect to act as a mediator if there needed to be a time extension or if there was defective work, and then also if there are any issues on the course, such as, um, any drilling, anything that was impede drilling. I'm in favor of this.
Further comments or questions? Councilmember Patel?
Do we need to make an amendment for changes that were emailed to us on this year? Or is it already included in the?
It's already been. Opposed?
No, no amendment.
No amendment?
All right, thank you.
Just the contract? It's already put it into the contract form.
Just asking.
Through the contract.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Norris?
Yes, just a positive, I said, yes, this has worked very hard, this is a forty-year of replacements, and I said, you know, our golfers, uh, you know, we, there are other people that do other sports than baseball and tennis, so I'm very happy that we're able to get this. Uh, we utilized our Stinkless County grant, and we're putting in a very minimal amount for, uh, Bridgeton, so, um, let's, uh, show on the road is what I want to get going. Get the trailer, hit the tractors out there tomorrow, huh, Brandon?
Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, mayor. I was just going to congratulate Mrs. Luke on the last, uh, reading of a bill. And then I was going to second it, but spoke, but anyway.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Well, I don't do a lot of golfing, uh, personally, but I've been told by those to do that we have one of the better, uh, nine-hole golf courses in the region, and I'm happy to see that we're taking steps to keep it that way. So, yes, I support this.
Very good. Taking no further comments or questions from council, the clerk will call and roll.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember. Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Contrary to councilmember Norris trying to vote twice, she passed in eight to nothing. Thank you. Attorneys report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Council communications will start with councilmember Zimmer.
Oh, thank you. I'm usually last in line, I guess my name.
First tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Um, a couple of things, uh, Mrs. Blenden, Perkins, thank you for coming, and, uh, um, I gotta say, I'm real disappointed in myself for not reading. We've worked so hard. I know you worked a hot, lot harder than I did on this and a lot harder than a lot of the other people, but we came up with the final, what we thought was a pretty good final, uh, four propositions, and it fell through. And I feel that I personally should have, you know, I went back to tell my kids what to vote on, you know, and my wife, and I started reading what we put down for the proposition, and that should have never been worded the way it was. It was terribly written. It was a, you know, in my, my opinion, it was, I don't know how it, how it got out, but I blame myself for not catching it, so I apologize, and I think everybody else should have, you know, take some of the blame too, that we shouldn't have let that out. I, I think it was a, it was poorly written and we should have caught that. To go to, uh, as stated in two A B or something like that, what the heck? How could you, you know, and then you start looking in the, the charter or in the, uh, on the website and you couldn't get any direct answers. They could see what you wrote, they could see some of the older stuff, they, but you couldn't piece it together, so, you know, I, I, and then there was an attempt to fix that, I know, the, the city did put something out, but I'm not sure that that was in time and whether it did the job it needed to, so, after all that work, I think we failed, and then I have a lot more words that I, I would say about it, but I won't, so, I apologize for that, and, uh, and to your people that were on the board as well, and I feel personally responsible that that, that got out like, like that. I should, I should have never, you know, I should have proofread it. We were, it was just, we're at the bottom line, we got what we wanted and everything, and it's like, okay, vote, 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 and hey, oh, well, now that we read it, it wasn't, wasn't the thing we should have voted on. Not that the, not that the propositions were bad, it's just how to relate it to the, to the people, to the residents, so I apologize to all the residents out there, and, um, okay, so, enough on that, but, um, hopefully we all see a problem and we'll get it fixed and we can try again soon. Um, I guess it's bittersweet, I, leaving, you know, leaving here is bittersweet. I gave the speech a year ago, so I'm not going to say too much. Um, what I'd like to say is I'm leaving, I, I'd like to give some of the, uh, you know, in a lot of cases with, uh, Stephen and, and Kathy, you know, new people to get in with new energy, you just, you, you can't believe how much this draws from you, and I know that everybody's strong here, but it draws, being up here over the year, year after year, a lot of good things and a lot of, uh, a lot of bad things too, you know. We get all the complaints, we get hundreds of complaints, we fix something, it may get noticed, but we, you know, all, we get a lot of the, and people don't see it. There's a few of you that come up here, see what we do, the rest of the people have no concept of what we do. So, that's, that's the bad thing, but the good things are, over the last ten years, I think I, eleven years, I think I've done some good things for a lot of people and the city, and I'm proud to have worked with, with the rest of the council, most of the rest of the council, because we've, we've done some great things. The mayor has, the staff has, the, the city staff, the administration, everybody has done great things here, and you don't, the people out there don't see it, you know, the, the budget is in great condition, the, the thing, the pension is great condition. We've done things, we, we've got hotels torn down, million-dollar projects that we had no idea where we were going to get money for it, and we got people to buy the property and build it up. There's, so there's so many things going on that we do that nobody sees, you know, it's behind the doors, and it's unfortunate, it's just, you know, I, I hope you guys can brush that off your shoulders and, and persevere, but anyway, um, um, so there's a million things that, um, you know, there's a million things we've done, but there's a million more we can improve on, and I hope you guys pull through and keep, keep moving on and trudging on, because I'm not, I'm not leaving Bridgeton, I want to live here forever, and, you know, I don't want to go. So, I'm positive, Stephen and Kathy, you'll do a, a great job and, um, you know, pull through after I leave, you guys are going to hopefully step up and do a better job than I was doing, and not miss things like I just previously talked about, so, anyway, thank you, and, uh, sorry, sorry to go. That's all I have.
Very good. We don't miss you as well. Councilmember Patel?
Yeah, it's hard to follow. Uh, um, Scott's been my co-council member since he ran against me back in, I guess that was twenty-eleven, and I partially brought this speech up a little bit at our last board meeting, and it's like, uh, you work with different people year after year, and you learn about their family, you learn about their, uh, their pros and cons and what they like politically and what they don't like politically, uh, you learn about their likes and dislikes, uh, Scott even picked on me and said, hey, I need to learn how to be a better listener, okay, and so, uh, I've learned that is one of the things I learned from Scott. Um, to get emotional with, losing somebody, you know, whether they're just a friend next door or not, that, excuse me for being a little more emotional, but, uh, I don't get emotional about too many things. Uh, he inspired me to come back after, after losing the election, and I, and I looked at it like, hey, it was great to be off, it, this, uh, takes a lot out of your life, like he just brought up, and getting out there and, uh, having a summer vacation a couple of years ago is like, kind of nice, but, uh, my intention is to come back and work at, at a hundred and ten percent, whether it was just me or not, and, and when I stepped aside, Scott was talking about, uh, what it would be like, yeah, I think I'm going to take some time off, but I might come back again, so maybe if we can still talk, we can come back again, you know, but, um, what, what's happened over the years is somebody, all of us just went through an election yesterday, you know, whether you were in it or whether you were helping somebody, and, uh, you know, the results are the results, and, uh, you create those lifetime friendships, in Scott's ca, in Scott's case, he's, he, uh, was one of my, not enemies, but one of my opponents, and he's become one of my best friends, you know, along with his family and his kids, so, uh, I'm missing him, but I can, he's only a phone call away, or just right down the street, so, uh, he'll still be back, if we got some hot issues that we want to present to council about changing some ordinances, you know, he'll be here to speak as a citizen, which, uh, myself, I even spoke as a citizen even when I'm a council member, just because I want to make sure I'm being heard as, as a citizen who lives over on Peavy Road, so, but that said, uh, I agree with what he was talking about on the city charter, I think we need to simplify it, I had a lot of people talk to me, I, I was actually for them, all for them in advance, a, ahead of time, but I a hundred percent agreed, that all nine of us agreed that it needed to go to citizens, whether we liked the ordinances, uh, that was proposed or not, but the biggest complaints that I heard from people is like, if you're reading everything, it says, go read the ordinances. Well, we even passed the ordinances, I couldn't even remember the ordinances, okay, so it's like, uh, we needed to be able to present what the ordinances were, or at least they should have been, all been hanging at every polling place in our, in our Bridgeton area anyway, uh, to where we could actually read what those ordinances were, so, but that said, uh, I'm done for tonight, your turn, Becky.
Very good. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also would like to say thank you to the Charter Review Board, um, I also was very disappointed about all of the hard work you did, and we failed to get that passed, so, a lot of the feedback that I got was they simply could not understand the language, so, we do have to do a better job of explaining it so that they can understand it, we are not, you know, we don't understand legal language sometimes, so the normal person, the normal voter is also not going to understand it, so that was the feedback that I, that I got. Um, congratulations to all the newly elected officials, um, and also thank you to everyone that did step up and run, um, not everybody wants to do it, it's a hard road, um, and I appreciate everybody that also came out to vote as a community. Uh, thank you to Councilwoman Luke, and to Councilwoman, um, Zimmer for your dedicated service and your dedication, I learned a lot from the two of you, um, of what to do, and sometimes maybe what not to do, so I appreciate that. And, um, when it comes time for chief, chief, if you can expand on the injuries for the officer a few weeks back, so that would be great, so, that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Grimmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, commend the, uh, Senior Citizens Coordinating Committee for sponsoring the candidate forum, um, although everybody in the city couldn't attend that, I think it was an excellent, uh, uh, exhumal, as you will, of, of the, all of the candidates, a, a chance for folks to, to get a look at them up close and personal, uh, we all had to present, I think it, just the whole thing was, is a great idea, and I'd like to see it continue as a, as a regular feature, so, uh, that's all to whoever thought of that, it's a great idea, and I think it should continue. Uh, secondly, I, I, again, echoing, uh, Chairman Perkins, very disappointed in the passage of, the non-passage of the, of the four, uh, propositions that we put up there, uh, simply put, we are not the same city we were in 1966 when that charter was written, changes, revisions, they've become necessary, we thought we had reduced it down to the very bare minimum of what we needed to continue, but unfortunately, I guess the voters, uh, as we've been alluded to, uh, just for some reason felt unhappy or, or uncomfortable with it, we're just going to have to do a better job, I don't know how we can make the language more simple than it was, but apparently we, we have to do something different, we'll be back with those, with those, I guarantee you, because they're all necessary, that's just the basis. We had more changes, we tried to just get it down to the, to the most important ones, so, anyway, we'll be back with that one. I'm going to miss serving with my friends, Councilman Luke, and Councilman, uh, excuse me, Councilwoman Luke, pardon me, and Councilman Zimmer, um, I think they're, it's very obvious, they are truly credits to their Bridgeton, and we're, that's the kind of people that we have in here that makes this community what we are, a great place to live, and, uh, fortunately, I think we've got some other folks that are going to step up and continue, but, uh, these two did it right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Hurd.
Okay, I, uh, I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to work with Scott and Gretchen, uh, they took this serious, I respect them both very much, and it's been a pleasure and an honor, and I want to congratulate you, Mayor, on your, on your victory, and to the new elected council members, and looking forward to working with each and every one.
Very good. Councilmember Norris.
Surprise, come here, thank you very much. Um, I will make this night about positive, um, but I do have to live, so, you will be hearing, but I won't go into it tonight. Uh, March 24th was the senior, uh, and it was a, that was a great opportunity, I know we got, how come we didn't do this? This was something new, never before, uh, you know, seniors brought it up, they didn't know these people, so I thought it was a great opportunity, the only problem I had, five minutes, what was that? Five minutes, so, I was trying to get other people's minutes, but they wouldn't let me get it, uh, but, anyway, that was, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but I got it, yeah. Uh, I do want to thank you all who was the sponsor, uh, came to our Aquanet Club, uh, who supported the, uh, pancake breakfast on Sunday, it was a great success, and I just wanted to let you know, a long time member, uh, tomorrow we will be honoring Jill Scheer and Doctor at our monument outside at the Government Center, at 1:30, her family will be here, she was a member, active member for, uh, twenty years at Aquanet, and of course, her husband, Tom, uh, was also on council, so it was a great honor for us to be able to, uh, give her a tribute tomorrow, so if you'd like to come by, if you do tell, or they, uh, I mean, nor the mayor, uh, and Mayor, please tell them that there's going to be a crowd coming to the Government Center, so they don't panic, uh, but also, I want to congratulate you on, uh, all the winners, winner, winner, chicken dinner, uh, and thanks to Steve, Steve Amushi, Jerry Grimmer, Kathy Luther, Julie Norris, I look forward to the new team, um, but I am very sad to see Scott Zimmer and Gretchen, uh, your love and devotion to Bridgeton is appreciated, and I, good luck on your new journey, and I know we can find you unless you change your number, so, uh, we will be calling, and I do appreciate that comment of Scott's people do not realize the powers and the powers and the agony that we go through to try to do the right thing, so, I do appreciate those comments, and, uh, also, thank you Charter Commission, I was also disappointed, um, you know, fifty years, I guess, you know, I don't know, uh, I guess we just have to bluntly put them in two words, and maybe that will be able to be helpful. Uh, also, Happy Easter to everyone, and also have a nice day, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hein. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mrs. Lepia, I'm totally in agreement with you, I brought that up a couple of years ago, I, I'd like to see some numbers on what it would cost to have an officer or two here, uh, for our council meetings and man the metal detector, um, I value my life and my safety, so, uh, maybe administration can work on that first, and let council decide if we want to spend the extra money, uh, which I'm in favor of, doesn't, doesn't matter what the amount is, my life is valuable, um, and a rhyme has no boundaries, so, could happen here anytime. Uh, last Friday, I had a Bridgeton resident who's a friend of mine, I won't disclose what board he lives on, asked me, uh, who the candidates, uh, were, and a little bit of information about them, and, uh, who I would recommend, uh, I did not recommend anybody, um, he also asked me about the charter amendments, I told him how I was voting, however, I recommended that he go on the city website and educate myself on the proposed charter amendments. Um, everybody probably is, um, thinking that council members, uh, only have two meetings a month, obligation, let me tell you, that's a very small part of our job, uh, we also cover our extraficial assignments, it could be once a month, it could be twice a month, it could be quarterly, it could be annually, but, uh, there's other meetings that we attend, uh, I attended numerous charter review and, uh, Revision Commission meetings, um, I wish that other people would have attended at least one, and voiced their opinion, and also voted, uh, on the amendments, uh, as council did, and then, uh, changed the rhyme, um, you, we can't change the past, but we can change the future, um, I do think we need to bring our charter up to date, and align ourselves with other successful municipalities in St. Louis County. I thank you, Mrs. Perkins and Mrs. Luke, for your comments tonight, and Blan, I mean, what is her, Mrs. Blan, for your comments tonight, and I'm in total agreement with you. Um, I did, uh, talk with the councilperson, Bud, yesterday, um, and said, I hope you don't win, and I told him, because if you did, I probably would have held you for the next four years, and he said, I don't hold grudges, and I want to let him know that I don't hold grudges either, thank you. Um, on to the, uh, elected officials, congratulations, Mayor Briggs, um, congratulations to the newest council members, uh, Stephen Westy and, uh, Kathy Luther, I think you guys will do a great job on the city council, you've been involved for the past year, you've educated yourselves, you attended meetings regularly, if not above and beyond, and I want to thank also, uh, Melissa Mitchell for being here tonight, I got a chance to speak with her yesterday morning at the library, and I encourage her, Ron Dirks, and also, um, Mark Vazada to continue, uh, and try and give back to the city in another way. We, we're going to have some openings on boards and commissions, and I'm sure the mayor would be happy to, uh, consider you for one of those boards and commissions, and I would welcome any of the three, or all the three, to any of the boards and commissions, and I would help and answer questions for them as, um, time goes on. Councilman Zimmer, I gave a pretty big speech last year when you were retiring from council, um, Scott's become one of my best friends over the year, and, um, at first, we were kind of enemies, because when he first announced he was running for council, I thought that he was being pushed, uh, by the mayor at that time, and I think he was, and I, I told him to make his own decision, don't do it because somebody else is telling him to do it, and, uh, I think that's, uh, true for the other, uh, people that are running for council or for mayor, do it because you want to do it, not because somebody else is pushing to do it, or has ideas for you, uh, form your own opinion, form your own ideas, um, so, tonight, another dynasty comes to an end. But, uh, the first dynasty I speak of was my, uh, first co-councilperson, for, in fact, I served with him for eight years, until he retired, and then, of course, uh, with Gretchen here the past few years, uh, she's been a delight, I've worked with, a great inspiration, uh, she's pushed me, um, she's gotten me more into due diligence, doing my due diligence, doing research, um, and I want to say this, I think Gretchen and, and Kathy, uh, have similar personalities, and they both have great educations, and I think there's going to be a great transition, uh, with Kathy coming on, and I think we're going to work as well together as Gretchen and I have worked together, and keep in mind that we won't vote the same way on every issue, but we remain friends when we work together, as all council members do, thank you. Uh, Jerry and Joanie, congratulations, looking forward to two more years at least, with you.
You're not on my list.
And, um, boards and commission members, thanks for being here tonight, we appreciate all the, the help that you give to the city. Um, I had a former resident, uh, with the rec center approached me yesterday and said that the, uh, the bricks outside in front need to be power washed to get rid of the salt, so it doesn't eat away at the, uh, at the brickwork, and then he also suggested, uh, instead of using salt, that you use fertilizer, it will melt the ice, and it's, uh, also environmentally friendly, and will up the grass, so it's, you know, washes off into the grass too, and you might guess who that is, Robert, if not, I'll tell you after the meeting, and I can tell you too, but, uh, he was a long time Bridgeton resident, had a, a business in Bridgeton, mayor probably knows what I'm talking about, and then, uh, I guess a question here to end up, um, or, I also want to thank Gretchen and Teller, I wish her luck in all our future endeavors, so, um, to end up, when it gets to the city attorney's report, I was going to talk a little, have to talk a little about procedure, uh, just to reiterate, uh, when you do a special use permit on the second reading, we should, before we went to the special use permit... Or we go into the administrative process, so with the special use permit, there's the legislative piece, that's the passing of the bill, but what state law requires is that with the special use permit, it's an administrative process, in Bridgeton, not every city is this way, but in Bridgeton, the city council acts as both the legislative body and the administrative body, so it creates a, sort of a cumbersome process, uh, so, once you get the bill on the floor, uh, that's the point at which you go in and make these findings of fact and conclusions of law, the state law says you have to consider these five things, the traffic, fire, safety, and so on, and so, once you vote on those administrative, uh, you know, make those findings, you can't then vote contrary to that in the legislative, uh, portion, and so, it's a long way of saying, yeah, we have to have sort of a final proposal before you go into the administrative piece, and so, it's, I, I think, you know, I think, I think part of the issue is, is we've, we've gotten, it's become a habit, and we go very quickly through it, and so, I think it's a matter of pausing for a second to say, okay, we, we, we have a second reading, and then, we're, we're, we're thinking about what we're doing, and we're saying, okay, now, I'm going to move to put the ordinance, the bill into ordinance form, and that point, if there's going to be any discussion, that's when it takes place, and then after the discussion is completed, any amendments that somebody wants to make to the bill are voted upon, then we table it, and then we go through the administrative process, come back out and, and either pass or reject the bill.
Good.
Mayor's vote, thank you. No, you did a great job, thank you, I appreciate you.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Holy cow.
I was going to go.
I thought I was going to have the longest reel tonight. Okay, um, so, first I have to say that the, the biggest reason I'm leaving is because I took a full-time job with the Salvation Army, where I just did disaster services, and I should be down in, um, what's the name of the county? Bolander County today, um, but I declined the deployment to be here, so I'm going to get to go at 6:30 tomorrow morning instead, so, there are just too many schedule conflicts, so, um, I have to really do due diligence to this job, and so many others have other to do, you need to be able to put the time and the effort into it, and I just, I can't do it the justice that it deserves, that you all deserve anymore, so, um, with that said, the next park and rec park coordinator meeting, I'm going to be out of town for work, so someone will have to cover the executive report. Someone. Um, someone left me some beautiful flowers here, I don't know who, but thank you very much. These are used too, thank you. Um, thank you again, um, Ms. Perkins and Mrs. Blan, as, I can't say it any better than Councilman Zimmer did, we appreciate all the hard work and effort that you all put into this, and we failed you, and I too apologize, um, I didn't know, and, like, like Councilmember Zimmer said, it's not accused, but we, we did rush at the end, and I think mistakes were made because of that, and it's clearly evident that none of the propositions passed, so I look forward to those being on the ballot again in the future, in different language. Um, Mr. Kane, unfortunately, that dead tree didn't come down i- in my backyard, so, that still needs to be worked on, um, something that I've learned by sitting up here is that now as a, as just a regular constituent...
Not in your backyard, though, remember.
Sorry, that's right, it's in gentry park, in, in the wood, in the wood. This is for us, this is not taking down trees in my... Um, what was I saying? I don't even remember, anyway.
The tree was in your yard.
The tree was not in my yard. Anyway, the tree still needs to be taken down, and something that I learned being up here is that as a constituent, I can come to you guys, and I can speak my case at the beginning of council meetings, so I can, Mr. Kane, when's that tree coming down? Um, May 4th is the National Day of Prayer, I don't know if you were going to cover this or not, it's going to be noon here at the Government Center, and all are welcome to come, Mayor will have a role in it, and then, again, congrats to all the council elects and mayor elects, um, particularly my successor, Kathy, I'm, I have no doubt in my mind that you will do a fabulous job, and I'm looking forward to your tenure. Uh, thank you, Councilman Hein, for all of your support and guidance on this journey, because I'm going to pull a box of health. Your, your passion and commitment to the city of Bridgeton is evident in all the time I've heard and hard work you put into this job. You've said this is a thankless job, so please allow me to give you sincere and heartfelt appreciation for all you do for constituents, employees, and the city of Bridgeton. Okay. Likewise, thank you to all of you who give so selflessly of your own time and talent for this support, and for the support you've given me, I think at some point, uh, you've all supported me, and I truly appreciate that, you as chief, you know, as council member, all the department heads, uh... those department heads, um, I've, it's been my pleasure to work with you all in this capacity. And to the constituents, it is my pleasure to serve as your councilperson, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to get to know some of you and scope for and call you friends. I look forward to continuing to live in the city of Bridgerton and to serve as a volunteer community member, so this isn't goodbye, just see you later in a new way. Uh, Councilmember Zimmer, we already said last year everything that we needed to say, so this time I'll just say, thank you for filling in for the last year, and enjoy your retirement, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. We'll go on to the staff report, Mr. Kane.
As you mentioned, Arbor Day is this Friday, uh, ten a.m., next to the Opera Pool, a small tree plant in Terryroy, this event is a final requirement for us to, uh, requirement of the distinction of trees at Eagle Day, so it's starting October, and will be done by the end of the year, so unfortunately, finally, council member Lister, very important consideration, ensure that they will pick up the tree, timeline, they move their own pace, I will hopefully open a note this week.
Thank you.
And they want representative at Arbor Day, so if you wanna fill up the mail, I'll get you some.
Dee.
Just wanted to remind everybody that it's a DEA drug take-back day, Saturday, uh, twenty-second, ten a.m. to two p.m., on the center parking lot, just a quick reminder. Um, I did wanna give an update, um, our officer that's son was a, one of the five officers that was injured in the crash out on Highway seventy, um, he, he remains stable in the hospital, um, as I had told a lot, he had an E-mail that he did sustain a pretty significant head injury, um, so they're waiting on more MRI results today to see, you know, uh, give him a little more information on how he moves forward, but he does show signs of recovery, uh, still being sedated. Um, we've been reaching out to the family on a daily basis to try to help out whenever we can, uh, also been in touch with the, uh, city of Lake St. Louis, the chief, a very good friend, just to, uh, make sure that we're there for them as well. Um, they did need some help from backstopers and some of the other organizations that are helping found. Um, when I was up in the war, um, last week after this happened, it was, you know, terribly heart-wrenching to be there, because the officer from Son in Missouri was there at that time, our officer's son was there, and then two other officers from Lake St. Louis, so I'm glad to say that the two other officers from Lake St. Louis have been released. Um, they did get pretty significant injuries, which required surgery on, on the shoulder, arm of one, and the leg of the other one. But, uh, I keep reaching out and extending our prayers to them and their family, whatever we need to help out. Um, you know, it's very touching, especially heaven's daughter and field as well, it's something that, like, that happens, so I appreciate everybody reaching out and, uh, your prayers and, uh, thoughts for that family. Um, also, as we move forward, I just wanted to, uh, thank Councilmember Luke and Zimmer for your service to the city of Bridgerton, um, very much appreciated, look forward, still working with you in the future, assistance, and, uh, you have my phone number, so whatever you need, you can reach out. Uh, extend my congratulations to the new official and, uh, those that were re-elected. I'll hang with you.
Very good. Mr. Gunn.
All right, we have the trash bash this Saturday, eight-thirty, we're gonna meet on, um, the adios, right behind, where you're sitting right now, we're gonna be cleaning up the creek behind Target, going to, uh, toward the machine install, uh, Brian's gonna be putting more t-shirts, or minimal t-shirts, we have plenty of t-shirts, clothes, um, looking forward to seeing everyone show up for a couple hours and, uh, cleaning up some creeks.
Mr. Bookout.
Just wanna take a minute and congratulate everybody that won their races, and, as the chief said, if you forgot, if you need anything, you have our numbers, I'm free to use it, and, thank you.
Very good. I'm gonna keep in mind, I do need a procedural one, so the schedule for April nineteenth, which is our next committee, our next council meeting, we hopefully will receive the certified results at that time. So, if the two councilmembers who are leaving us unfortunately wanna come back, they can, because we will have to have six of you at least to certify the results of the election. You don't have to be here, but that would be nice. We will then have the oath of office administered to the newly electeds, then we will break for a small reception that we always have for the newly electeds out in the foyer there, then we'll come back seven o'clock for the actual council meet. So, that kinda puts it all in perspective for you, so six o'clock is the next one on the sixth, or on the nineteenth, excuse me, and that will be to accept the certified results, pending that we get them from the county, and I would presume we would, since unfortunately wasn't that large of a turnout throughout the area. Okay, on the, uh, the issue of the charter changes, I will just be very brief on that one, and things you have to keep in mind as well, that you have to follow legal requirements on the way you perform, we draft those up. The attorney was following procedures that he has been involved with numerous times previous on charter amendments. I tend to agree that it was somewhat complicated and cumbersome to understand it, but that's the way legally we have to do things, 'cause otherwise it would be subject to a legal challenge and we would probably lose it in court. So, maybe there's something we could do a little bit differently, I would hope we can, but remember, we do have to follow the way it legally has to be done. I was disappointed in it as well. Speaking on elections, I would like to note that we did have a spirited election campaign, myself, Councilmember Hood, but we didn't let it go out of hand. We all accept the results that came through, you know, which is one of the things you don't see in some other areas of the area, and I would like to note that, you know, Bridgerton hopefully is a shining example of how you can conduct elections, how you can be civil, and don't treat people, you know, I'm trying to struggle with the word here, poorly, disrespectful thing, that's the word I was looking for. You can do it, and I think we showed the rest of the communities around St. Louis as well as the state, that you can do these things like that. I was very pleased, I know Councilmember Grimmer said, we had elections in all of our council races, as well as mayors. You know, that's the first time I can remember, folks, that we had that many run. So, it is the democratic process we hear, eh, we have here, and it does work. With that, I will go ahead, I will encourage people to go to the trash bash if possible on Saturday, and we'll take a motion for adjournment. Well, if you'd favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.